Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Goh.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council Meeting of June 1st, 2022. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Goh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. It's a joy tonight to have Bishop Vernon Kemp from Greater Harvest offer the invocation. Greater Harvest is so involved in our community, it's always a joy for me to visit. And then, following the invocation, Dr. Brenda Lewis, who is the new Governor's Appointee to the California Board of Education, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Lewis has served in the Kern High District more than 30 years. She last held the position of Associate Superintendent of Instruction, Masters of Science in Physical Education from Oklahoma State University, and a doctorate from University of Laverne. But as the Governor's Appointee to the Board of Education, which is an 11-member board, which includes one student member, Dr. Lewis is in charge of policymaking, setting curriculum standards, and approving the curriculum in every subject area. So this is a really big deal for us in Bakersfield to have a representative on the California Board of Education. So at this point, Pastor, come and lead us. Thank you. Would you all please stand?
Let us bow our heads. God of grace, God of mercy, God of justice and peace, we thank you for the space of grace that you have afforded us to comment, to share, and to the business matters of this great city. Thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of this city. Help us to act with character and conviction, and may those sharing information give us pertinent points so that we all clearly understand. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions and to wisely evaluate our options considering the pros and the cons. Help us to be unified in making the best possible decisions and to effectively carry them out. May we listen with understanding and goodwill, and Lord, we pray that you will help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service and remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need in this hour. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree and treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence of your creation and what they deserve. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confidence in your goodness and love. In your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated, and I'm going to come down just for one minute. Dr. Lewis, stay right there. It's not every day that we have an appointee to the California Board of Education. You know how influential education is in shaping our city and our community. And so, Dr. Lewis, we're just so proud to have you represent our community and our state, and we thank you for your service. It's my joy to present you with the Mayor's Medal.
Good evening, Mayor Goh and councilmembers. I want to thank you for this honor this evening, and I am thankful for the honor and the opportunity that I have to continue service to the students and parents and staff for the state of California. And Bishop has already prayed, but I ask that you continue prayer for me and the other board members on the state level as we make valuable decisions that guide and direct the education of our youth and support for our teachers. Thank you.
Bishop Kemp is Dr. Lewis's pastor, so just a great combination. Thank you for being here tonight. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chamber being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
Thank you. And in keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed to be speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you're here on hearing items 9A through 9D, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item is not on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Goh, we have not received any speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not on the agenda?
Mayor Goh, we have received three, four speaker cards for items listed, not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Karen Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor and council. You may recall, I was here at your 3:30 meeting on May 4th wherein I indicated that following my event on May 21st, I would be back to give you my feedback on the condition of Plans Park and how our event was able to proceed. Unfortunately, there were some improvements made, but not enough to make a tremendous difference. I would encourage the city to have staff take a more critical look at the park and its conditions, particularly in that they're charging $240 to rent the facility in which I had to clean up for two hours. I hired the homeless to help me as well. So there still needs to be some work done at Plans Park. We were able to not only improve upon the condition, move a lot of debris, move standing water, and those kinds of things in order for us to have the event. I would just hope that more attention is given, and any future events won't run into those types of issues at Plans and/or any other park. I was delighted to be contacted by Mr. Anthony and his offer of a refund as a result of the inability to meet our standards for such an event. So I want to thank you too as well for supporting his offer of a refund, and I'd like to request somewhat of a detailed outline of what the $240 covered, in that we cleaned up the park and the debris was still there. Thank you so much for hearing me, and I'll look forward to future meetings, hopefully ending on a more positive note. All the best to you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. And I see Mr. Anthony in the lobby, and he heard your comments. I'm sure he'll be following up with you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Michelle Vallejos.
Welcome. It's been a few years since I've been here. 2019, we asked that you create animal ordinances regarding breeding, spay, neuter, and that was a discussion that I was a part of. I don't know if anything has happened with that, but if this has not continued, I suggest that it's time we start moving forward that county. Our subcommittee from 2019 just remet. All seven of us members all voted yes to push through ordinances to the commission in two weeks. That was created with animal advocates and rescue people and people associated with breeding and AKC, which usually are a lot at war, and we all agreed on what the county wrote and that county council pushed through, and I think that would be a great thing to look at. I don't know if any of you guys have been at the city shelter lately. It's rough. They're full all the time. Through the end of May, there were free adoptions, and they're running full 200 and something, 60 kennels full all the time. They're running free promotions through the month of June, and it's still, you know, they have four open kennels, and Animal Control says they're bringing in six dogs, and this is every day. And you know what happens when there's four kennels and six dogs are coming in? Someone has to walk through and pick out two dogs to kill just to make room for the incoming, and this is, I feel bad for the people that work there. I feel bad for the rescue organizations and all those community members who are trying to clean this place up, and I know it's because of irresponsible breeding and the irresponsible pet owners. Like, I understand that, but I really think it's time we look into holding them accountable somehow. I think it's really important. I love my community, and I don't like to see it looking the way it does. We know places that have animals that run around the streets, and it's not pretty. I know that you guys are going to be talking about an ordinance involving an inanimate object in a couple of weeks, and to me, it's really concerning that that is something that's such a big deal, but these lives that we all, I know we love animals, and I hope that we can do something about it. It's hard to talk about because being an animal lover and advocate is not super revered. I mean, we get a lot of thank yous, and of course, people appreciate it, but it's way down on the list when it comes to people actually doing something about it, and I know a lot of places are struggling just like us, and I hope that we can be one of the people who push it through first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vallejos. Next speaker, please. Council, sorry, Councilmember Gonzalez.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Clegg, it's been a while since this issue has been discussed and reviewed, and I wonder if you would, or your team would provide an update to council as to the work related to this thus far and potential next steps. And admittedly, it's been a few years, and Legend Lit, I know, has reviewed this, but it'd be nice to have a refresher for the whole council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Next speaker, please.
Isaiah Crompton.
Would you raise the microphone, please?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm not here to fuss this evening. I'm here to say thank you for a few things. Pastor Jordan is a little under the weather, but he wanted me to thank you for the crosswalk at MLK, and our students can go back and forth on MLK without having to dodge, play dodgeball with the traffic. I want to thank Councilmember Eric and Councilmember Gonzalez and whoever else, staff, that helped to get that crosswalk there so our students can cross safely. I also like to thank you guys for the community garden. We're making some headway with that, and also being able to possibly go into the Veterans' Building to do a food distribution right there at MLK Park. That area needs a lot of work, and it's, I don't know, it's kind of hard for you guys to say we don't have the money, so let's get it fixed up and cleaned up for our youth, for our seniors, and let's do a good job at it, and we have people in the community that are ready to help out also. So let's keep working toward a positive solution. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Crompton, and thank you for your years of leadership in that community. Next speaker, please.
Gemma Perez.
Gemma, would you like a translation, or you'll do it in English? And we'll double the time to four minutes for translation. Welcome.
My name is Gemma Perez. I am from the Greenfield Walking Group. Thank you for hearing us out. And I would also thank you for all the support that you always give the community. We've worked a lot together, and I would like to continue working together in the future. I'm here with the youth group, and they graduated two months ago. For advocacy for leadership. Due to the graduations, they are not able to be here tonight. They have two work plans. One group wants to work doing cleanups, and they've been cleaning. The other group would like to work, say, frost to school and parks. In a moment, they will come up and speak and explain to you why we're here. But I would like to thank you beforehand for always being there for the community. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Natalie Santa Maria, and I am with Visión y Compromiso. It is one of the organizations that work with Gemma and the Greenfield Walking Group in what she just spoke about, this leadership and advocacy, and I'm here to talk to you about that support that we are asking. You will hear from two, three of the youth today. We wish to continue on working on those work plans. We're still seeing a lot of money that is going to be discussed, right? Budget, a lot of allocations, and their youth voices need to be heard today, so my ask is that we do that. These are youth that are starting to get involved in their community. We hope it is a good experience and a good relationship that they start to establish with each of you as they get to know you as their city council members, you mayor, I know you were there at the graduation, and we hope to do that. Just create that relationship, continue to work together, hopefully a meeting with the city manager, and that they continue to get involved in this advocacy work and what they want to accomplish for their communities. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Barbara Perez.
Hello, everyone. My name is Barbara Perez, and I'm from the Greenfield Walking Group, and I'd like to briefly discuss the possibility of funding a youth resource center in the Greenfield area. The Greenfield Walking Group, we have had trouble finding a place to hold our meetings and other events. We, but when it comes to, we've had to do it at my mother's house, which is very small. Most people do not fit in there, and when we have to do it outside, the weather isn't always favorable. So we would like to ask for a community center that is not only for our group, but is more accessible to members of our community so they can go to and find resources, hold events, and yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Next speaker, please.
Jeanette C. Santa Maria.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Jeanette C. Santa Maria. I am a Golden Valley student at, oh my goodness, I am a student at Golden Valley, and I just have a question for you guys for today, and I just want to know the update on the crosswalk on Huskine and Monitor. I came a few months ago for that city council meeting, and I talked up here, and I was just, I just came back for an update because I'm curious on where that is going. So thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker, please. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for bringing that back to our attention. It is something that, although he's not here tonight, Councilmember Parlier and I were very interested in seeing moving forward. We've heard many stories, and some of them unfortunately tragic, but we want to do better as a city, and want to give an opportunity to Greg from Public Works to see if we have some updates.
Mayor Goh, Councilman Arias, thank you. In terms of planning for improvements around Golden Valley School, we actually have a plan to improve three schools with flashing crossing lights to help make it safer for children's and parents to cross and maneuver around the school there. So our plan is to establish those crossing school lights. We've just completed the design, about to go out to bid, and before the start of the next school year, have those crossing lights in place.
And this is for the crosswalk at Golden Valley as well?
That's correct. That's Golden Valley, Paul Elementary, and Norris Elementary.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, next speaker, please.
Lucy Perez.
My name is Lucy Martinez.
Can you get closer to the mic, please?
My name is Lucy Martinez. I am a student at Bakersfield High School. I'm here to bring the attention to the crossing marks of Bakersfield High School. As a senior, I have been there for four years, and I have seen not people get hit, but pretty close, especially not necessarily the area immediately around the school, but on, I want to say it's H, there's a crosswalk that doesn't have any lights most of the time. Most people don't see it. To be fair, I didn't even see it till I saw someone walking across it, and that person did almost get hit. Very scary experience to think that I was about to experience someone get hit by a car. So as a senior and an upperclassman, I feel like it's our job to keep our underclassmen safe and safe for crosswalks. I feel like we'd do that very well, especially because my sister's a sophomore, and most of these kids don't be paying attention, but their parents don't either sometimes, and that can take lives. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was such a joy to be together with the Greenfield Walking Group youth and to see your passion and the projects that you put together. Thank you so much, Natalie and Gemma, for your leadership also for your youth. Do you have something to conclude?
Yes, I think if Andre, we can get connected, Lucy can get connected with you, I believe that's under your city board, so, or if it isn't, that way there can be a conversation established, and we can go more into that.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
I'd be happy to connect with you regardless, and certainly work with the representative in that area.
Thank you all very much. Is there anything else, city clerk?
That was our final speaker, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now, next item, please.
Appointments, item 6A. One appointment, Ward 7, regular member, to youth commission to complete a term to expire July 31st, 2024. One application for appointment has been received from Genuar Kar Both.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Parlier asked that I would make a motion to, for Genuar Kar Both to serve on the youth commission.
Thank you. This appointment is by ward, so no ballots are needed, and you have a motion. Would you please cast your votes?
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. And Ms. Both, are you here tonight or your family? Oh, there you are. Thank you so much for your service. I know you're at Ridgeview High, a sophomore, 4.0 GPA, ASB, and I read that your peers consider you kind, positive, and hardworking, and your teachers describe you as creative, well-organized, helpful, fun, and well-liked by your peers. So thank you so much for your service. We appreciate it. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 9, I apologize, 7A through 7AR for approval. Four staff memorandums have been provided. One for 7A, transmitting corrections to the minutes due to Scrivener's errors. Another for 7K, correcting the dollar amount in the resolution to $49,500. 7U, transmitting the signed agreement, and 7V, transmitting the signed agreement.
Thank you. Oh, and we have some, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to pull anything off the agenda, but I wanted to make a comment, maybe a request from the city manager. At each meeting, we, on our consent calendar, we approve expenditures, and some of them are really big. You know, we're going to have another fire engine for $250,000. We're going to have a big tractor for $600,000. We'll have this for $175,000, and this, it's a lot of money, and it adds up. Maybe most of these come into the, you know, total, I don't know if this corresponds to the capital expenditure budget in the big budget that said like $93 or $94 million, if those all count as capital expenditures, but we approve a lot, and I'm always wondering, and I'm not criticizing this because we're a big company, this is what happens, how do you, Mr. Clegg, feel and the rest of us, that we really, a lot of them say we're not going to bid but one person. In fact, that's about 50% of the time. You know, we've skipped the bidding process, we're going to go one, and I'm not saying, a lot of times that's justified, but I would like some process, I don't know if you do an internal auditor, you do something the city needs to make everybody feel comfortable that we really bid this stuff hard. We know, we know we're not overpaying for that quarter-million-dollar tractor. We just, we're so far away from this, and we- far away from this and we proved so much money. I just, in a private company, we have auditors who go and check, did they follow the bidding process? Let's see the three bids. The normal processes of every big company. I don't know if we have that and you can explain this to me later, but we need some sort of process that, like any other large corporation, that's spending all this money on capital improvements, that feels comfortable when we had a project that, you know, was analyzed, that was bid properly, that, that it was really rung out on, is this, was this the best and the cheapest we could get, only because I don't feel like I had any value. I just approved, I guess, the tractor costs $256,000 and five more pickup trucks and I'm just rubber stamping things myself because I'm, we need, we need some process that makes everybody feel comfortable, yeah, we really have rung these expenses out. And I, I think it would help us with the public, you know, we get a lot of public comments, you guys should spend money like water, you know, and, but no, there's a, there's a real disciplined process that internally to protect us against this. So, I throw that out there if you want to respond tonight or if you want to get back to us later, but I think we need something that the council is aware of and makes us all feel comfortable that we're bidding hard and that the, you know, projects are analyzed carefully for all the, you know, for all the money we spend.
Thank you, Councilmember. I would provide a quick response tonight and I think we could follow up with more information. I think in two different veins. One is an initial response of, in memo format, of some of the key internal controls in our process that exist today, so that there's an awareness there. If there's a desire to take a deeper dive at, say, a budget and finance committee, to have a review of what our internal control protocols and processes, I think we'd be happy to do that. We could start with a memo format, just highlighting some of those key points. But then the second vein is that our new contract that was approved recently by council for an audit firm to be able to come and do projects each year, that you should have two or three internal control reviews each year. Sometimes that will be, let's say, on capital projects, other times it would be on procurement, other times it might be, you know, related to our, our accounting processes or our accounts payable. And so, being able to look at the risk assessment that was done in this last year and where that independent auditor thought we might have greater risk areas, you go in and you do an internal control review to make sure there's the appropriate controls in place. And then, the goal will be to have those come to the budget and finance committee and ultimately to the city council, the reports that are done by this independent audit group to share the recommendations and findings from these internal control reviews to give that level of confidence that, you know, we have another set of eyes on it and that the processes that are in place are giving us the controls we want to make sure good decision-making is happening. So, we're about to go through a process with the budget and finance committee of identifying those, you know, seven to eight projects in this coming fiscal year. But in the meantime, too, we'll provide a memo that outlines some of our key controls and process points that we have through, through our procurement process.
You know, something that seems independent, eyes were looking, by the way, we're growing. So, our $600 million budget this year in a few years could be a billion. There's a lot of money moving around and, I mean, I think we paid, I think we're purchasing a $20 million software program. So, these are, these are big numbers. And, I mean, I, I would add that if, whichever firm, be sure that, be sure they have actually the resources to properly do this audit. I used to have audits my prior life and we would spend a lot more money than, you know, 500 million in capital expenditures alone in a year. And the audit firms often will put it in their scope or, you know, charter the money for it, but they don't really do it. You find out later. They didn't question anybody. They didn't really get in and dig. So, I'd only caution, you need somebody who takes it seriously, that you, you, the boss here, wants the feedback. You know, we getting this right, rather than, okay, we allocated $50,000 in the audit budget, we pay them $50,000, they said everything's fine. They sampled two or three things. They sent the junior staff over in the auditing firm, that's where they worked, but all the junior staff there has never done it before. So, you know, there's still quality audits. You need to be insisting, no, I want a quality audit because I actually care. I want to be sure we're spending carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not pull any item off the consent, but I do want to comment regarding items 7W, the Economic Hour, Two-D area incentive program grant to Fredo's Pizza. You know, colleagues, the EOA incentive program was created to encourage the redevelopment of vacant property or buildings with grants for site and building improvements, building, building expansion and moving costs and costs required for public improvement projects. And here we have an applicant who is helping us revitalize downtown, specifically the area around 19th and I Street at 1604 19th Street, which has been a property that has, has seen better days and, and really encouraged and excited to see it once more activated. But I wanted to introduce you all to the applicant tonight, the proprietor of Fredo's Pizza, Alfred Cabrera. He's in the audience tonight. Alfred, if you'll just stand up, please, and be recognized. Alfred, I want to share with you his story. He grew up in Bakersfield. After high school, he went straight to the oil fields and he worked for three years as a field service technician in the oil fields, but decided that he wanted a career in software engineering. And so, after, every day after work, he would go home, he would crack open the books, go online and teach himself coding. And he did this day after, after day, raising his family, teaching himself coding. As a result, he now works as a software developer in Santa Monica, where he currently lives with his wife and two children, and he's doing well. And so, he's always had a heart for downtown Bakersfield, his hometown. He's always had a dream to open up a business and he knew that he wanted to bring something special, like a wood fire pizza restaurant, to downtown Bakersfield. And that's what he's doing with this, with this place. So, Alfred, I just wanted to say congratulations on your new opportunity and welcome to downtown. But I also want to just lift you up as a really awesome Bakersfield story. It's a story of entrepreneurship, of grit, of upward mobility, and it's something that we should all celebrate. So, congratulations again.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Vice Mayor?
Okay. Does any council member wish to remove an item for separate consideration tonight? Seeing none, I will move approval of items 7A through 7AR with the noted corrections.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Hearings.
Thank you. And we have an interpreter present for Spanish language. Sir, did you get everybody who needs interpretation? Would you like to come up and? You're welcome to come up and give instructions to those who might need your service. Is there anyone, just, okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So, our next item is a public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side. It's important that you identify yourself and make your statements succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up and please quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. So, Madam Clerk, please read the first public hearing item.
Public hearing item 9A. Public hearing to consider adopting refuse and recycling rates for fiscal year 2022, 2023. One, a resolution adopting an increase to fiscal year 2022, 23 refuse and recycling rates. And two, resolution providing for the collection of residential and commercial refuse and recycling charges by the Kern County Auditor Controller's Office.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Would you just raise your hand if there's anyone? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? I don't see any. And so, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action.
Mayor Go, I did want to announce that we received a staff memorandum transmitting 17 protests.
Thank you. At this time, I don't see any requests, colleagues, to speak. Vice Mayor?
I move to approve staff's recommendation.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next hearing item, please.
Public hearing to consider adoption of sewer rates for fiscal year 2022, 2023. One, a resolution adopting increases to fiscal year 2022, 23 sewer and storm sewer user rates. Two, resolution providing for the collection of residential and commercial sewer and storm sewer service user flat rate charges by the Kern County Auditor Controller's Office. Staff memorandum has been provided, transmitting 16 protests, two email inquiries, and 22 phone inquiries.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? I don't see any. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? I don't see any. So, at this time, I will close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Don't see any requests to, oh, Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question for staff. We received a comment in our blue memos that kind of pointed out that the fee, the residential sewer flat rate is pretty close to what the commercial sewer flat rate would be as well. To me, to me, that's hard for me to wrap my mind around that, considering that, you know, it's probably going to be significantly easier for those commercial users to make that payment. So, I, I would just like to, for my clarification, understand the rationale behind the establishment of those rates.
Sure. Yes, sir. City Council, Mayor Go, in terms of the standard assessment, there is a one residential unit that's applied across the board. The non-residential rate payers are actually paying more by virtue of tracking of their water usage. So, there's a direct relationship between the additional amount that they're paying and the water usage for non-residential. For residential, single-family homes, it's just the one flat fee across the board without tracking the water meter.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Vice Mayor?
I move staff's recommendation.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next hearing item, please.
Hearings item 9C. Public hearing to consider an increase in domestic water quality rates, monthly readiness to serve rates, and monthly private fire protection service rates for fiscal year 2023, 2022, 23, proposed 5% rate increase. We have provided a staff memorandum transmitting four protests.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? If so, this would be the time. Please step to the microphone. Ms. Placencia, do you wish to speak in opposition? Is Ms. Placencia here? No. Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? This would be the time. So, seeing none, at this point, I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor for a motion to continue the public hearing on this item to June 15th, 2022.
So moved.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, next hearing item, please.
Public hearing item 9D. Public hearing for fiscal year 2022, 23, operating and capital improvement program budgets. We have provided a staff memorandum on this item as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? If so, please step to the microphone and identify yourself and proceed. Madam Clerk, I see that...
Mayor, can we open the hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. At this time, I will open the public hearing. So, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? And I see several speaker cards. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Placencia. I'm with Leadership Council, Palzada F. And I'm also part of the EJ, which is the Economic Justice Coalition. And we're here, I'm here to talk about infrastructure. So, we want more funding for infrastructure. Casa Loma, they, they need traffic calming enhancement in front of Casa Loma Elementary, including speed bumps, crosswalk lights and traffic studies for additional stop signs or traffic lights around Casa Loma Elementary, particularly in the intersection of Madison and Nina Street. Of Award 2, East 9th Street, the residents have raised the need for street cleaning and light repairs. Residents in the community of Lakeview have also raised the need for street cleaning and then the removal of abandoned vehicles, street light repair, and ADA-approved sidewalks as well. These communities in our county island, so they're both city and county, so if y'all can please work with the county as well to improve safety in those communities as well. And then, we also have a need for streetlights on East 9th Street and the community of Lakewood and I strongly suggest that they be ADA-accessible. And then, on behalf of housing, Bakersfield residents are in dire need of immediate habitable and affordable housing. We have rent hikes, forced evictions by landlords seeking to raise rents, substandard housing living conditions, including safety hazards and high temperatures inside of the home due to a lack of air conditioning, which is really dangerous for the health of the, of our residents. This year's budget has to reflect adequate resources to address immediate housing needs. I suggest implementing, or we suggest implementing first-time homebuyer programs that help residents below the 30% AMI without a need for citizenship because they come from a measure N, sales tax, which is from all the community. So, there should not be a status limit on homebuyer programs. We also urge the city council to... drilling units up to code. We urge the City Council to include Framework and Resident/Tenant Oversight Committee for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then, we also urge the City Council to add at least another $5 million since housing is a huge issue right now for our residents. In addition, we urge funding to be utilized for intentional outreach and behavioral health services for unhoused folks. We look forward to working with you and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Placencia. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Ashley De La Rosa.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Ashley De La Rosa. I'm the Education Policy Director for the Dolores Huerta Foundation. Within my position, I have the ability to strategize and hear from community members to improve their students' education. While doing this, many of the issues that our parents face and want to change are infrastructural changes. For example, in Ward 1, the school bus pickup and drop-off location near White Lane and Gordon for Sequoia Middle School experiences a lot of flooding due to a lack of maintenance in that area, and then, there's also little to no sidewalks. Around the Casa Loma area, parents have expressed a need for clearly drawn lines, crossing lights, more streetlights, and speed bumps near their schools. When we advocated for, about these issues to the Bakersfield City School District, we were told that it is the city's responsibilities to address these issues. Having these basic necessities will demonstrate to students that the city cares about their learning environment outside of the schools and is willing to work with the school districts to ensure improvements in our most needed communities. Investing in our youth will bring positive changes to our communities, and so I ask for this, for funding to be more geared towards infrastructure and to building the relationship with the school districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Cecilia Castro.
Welcome, Ms. Castro.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Cecilia Castro. I'm the Deputy Director of the Dolores Huerta Foundation, but also a longtime resident of Bakersfield. I actually live in Ward 1. So, thank you to Councilmember Arias for all the work that you're doing. I am very grateful to have the opportunity through my work to be able to talk to many community residents, many of them who have been advocating for many years to improve our wonderful city. And when speaking to them more recently, many of them have wanted to prioritize public safety or community safety. And when people think about community safety, they automatically think of law enforcement. But in reality, it's resources, programs, and services that support our youth and families. I want to share a comment by one of our community residents, Teresita Macias, who couldn't be here because of a graduation. She says that lights and renovated restrooms are needed in the Casa Loma Park. Streetlights are needed by MLK Street and Madison Street. And we also need a park by the new school, MLK, so that our youth have recreational activities after school. Now, I wanted to share some stats from a report. It's a report by Trust for Public Land that actually ranked Bakersfield Parks on different characteristics for an effective park system. So, Bakersfield Parks rank 19 out of 100 for access. They rank 57 out of 100 for amenities, and it ranks 21 out of 100 for equity. Only 6% of Bakersfield City land is used for parks and recreation, and I think that we can do better. So, please consider increasing the Bakersfield City budget dollars to our roads, our parks, our lights, recreational activities for youth, mental health, in order to really improve our community safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castro. And the next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Myra Rios.
Welcome, Ms. Rios.
Hi. Can y'all hear me? Hi. I'm here in my capacity as co-chair of the Economic Justice Coalition of Kern County, which some members are here from. And we're a coalition of local organizations and advocates that work directly with community members to advocate for their needs. And right now, we're in the process of collecting survey responses around their budget priorities. So, I wanted to share some of those. My colleague Sandra already addressed some of them, which were infrastructure and housing. So, following up on Cecilia, I want to address some of the comments that we've heard around public safety and mental health responses from the city. So, what we've...well, I want to actually start with, during the May 9 budget presentation, where Chief Terry spoke to y'all, he did mention that, you know, there are some foundational elements that the police is never going to be able to address, and I think that the community knows that really well. And so, some of the things that they're advocating for or identifying as needs for further investment include mental health resources, prevention intervention programs, drug treatment programs, and healthy living programs. They're seeing these as ways to solve some of the social problems that we're not going to be able to do through law enforcement intervention. Additionally, we, City Manager Christian Clegg acknowledged that economic development and quality of life investments are crime prevention, and the community definitely agrees with that as well. So, we, when it comes, for example, to issues of homelessness and the folks that are unhealed in our community, further investments in things like mental health and drug treatment programs are what's going to give us the long-term solutions to those issues that we're seeing in our community and be able to meet the needs for all of our constituents. So, we're urging you to please consider the root causes of the safety issues that we're seeing in our community and prioritize those. Additionally, and I appreciate the statistics around parks and green spaces, the community is prioritizing the need for more parks and more green spaces in our communities. And for those neighborhoods that already have parks, they want to see improvement. So, they've identified the needs for improvements in infrastructure and things of that sort in their parks. They're also seeing it as a way to improve safety. For example, you know, like we said, better lighting, things of that sort that lead to further safety and reduce opportunities for violence in our community. So, yeah, so I just, I urge you all to please consider those things as you're gearing up to approve the budget for this year to address some of the root causes of the issues that we're seeing as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rios. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Mayor Go, I have not received any additional speaker cards.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Go, City Councilmembers and City Staff. My name is Rosa Lopez, and I'm a long-term resident of Bakersfield, specifically in Ward 2. But I'm here on behalf of the Economic Justice Coalition that some of my colleagues and collaborators shared. As some of them already shared, what some of our priorities is to connect with community residents, to really engage them in the budget process. I think year and year again, what we've seen is the same pattern. We continue to associate public safety with increased law enforcement and increased punitive approaches. And I think, you know, I really want to appreciate what Councilmember Freeman said in the beginning, not specifically on this, but the idea that we need to really pause and be cautious about how we're investing the public funds. The public has insistently requested that public safety doesn't just equal law enforcement, more law enforcement presence, but everything that my partners have shared, we need access to affordable housing, we need green space, parks, recreational activities for youth. The community service that we released a few weeks ago, that is a recurring pattern that we see. The people want to feel more comfortable and associate public safety with investment in those community development projects or programs that residents and youth can engage in. And so, I really want to, you know, appreciate that idea that we should just caution of how, you know, we're really moving forward with the budget process, to really review and revise in how we're investing in public safety, community development, and really take an opportunity to engage public through this process. You've heard that a lot of people were interested in showing up, but there's like 10 schools or multiple schools having graduation. So, maybe if you want to hear public comment, we should accommodate it to a time that public can actually attend. When we have, you know, streets packed with cars going to graduations, I have family members during graduations, so I really want to also really invite or suggest that we include the public in the public budget process and we accommodate to their availability and the way that they can access us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
Hello.
Welcome.
My name is Wendell Wesley Jr., Mayor Go, Councilman, City Staff. I think when we're addressing these issues, there's always a root cause for crime, and I think a lot of the root cause is affordability. When people get pretty strapped, sometimes they make bad choices. And these bad choices just lead to a lot of trouble, destructions. So, we really need to look at root causes. One of those things is just housing and utilities. When people can barely make it, some people can't handle the stress, they start drinking, they go mental, it just adds to more crime. Our kids are constantly being approached by gang members, okay? There's a lot of stress in their homes as well. So, we need to help families out with these root causes. When teachers identify kids that are under stress, I know they have PTA meetings, but, you know, maybe there's something the city can do more to help these families out. But a lot of it goes back to the root causes of affordability, you know? You've got a lot of single-family homes there, okay? And, you know, we all know there's different statistics that are attached with latchkey kids as well. So, I believe that community centers in these parks would also make the parks better and safer because there's someone there. So, if kids are approached, there's adults there that can say, hey, you know, we're a family park, you have to leave, we'll call the authorities. We have to look out for each other, and there's not enough of that going on. So, having more community centers in our neighborhood would be an added plus to help our parents and help the city, so we can all work together to not just have a safer community, but to have a more vibrant community. Because these community centers are going to have a lot of programs, everything to help people with their finances, if parents need help with their finances, there's Dave Ramsey courses. There's a lot community centers can do to help its residents and its communities. So, I would encourage the board to take a long look at what community centers are doing abroad in other counties and the possibilities of having community centers in our park and addressing these root causes, so we can solve our problems together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? I don't see any, so at this time, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to start by saying thank you to all those who actually made it out tonight to provide public comment, and thank you for all of the comments related to Ward 1 and Ward 2, East 9th Street. I took note, we'll get right on it and begin digging in. I've had East 9th Street in Ward 2 all for, what, one month? And so, excited to get over there and to assess the situation and certainly work with our awesome Public Works Department on that. But I think the points that you're making are well-received, at least from me. There's well-documented evidence that there is a strong correlation, or at least connection, between place and violence. And that connection exists, most evidently in the realm of housing, with many studies showing, for example, a study in Philadelphia, researchers found that structural repairs to homes of low-income owners in majority-black neighborhoods were associated with a 22% reduction in total crime. Another study found that efforts to transform and clean vacant lots, we've talked a lot about our vacant lots, in high-poverty neighborhoods led to a 29% reduction in violent crime. There's also evidence of, and connection between green space and crime. And we heard a lot about advocacy for improving our public parks and seeing that we have more of an investment in more green space in our urban parks. And it's interesting because, you know, our current park standard was adopted years and years after most of East Bakersfield and South Bakersfield was already built. And so, we have fewer parks per capita east of the 99 than we do on the west side, and we have to correct that. We have to go back and, as we look at infill development and urban renewal, park and place has to be a component. But there's evidence that finds that investments to the public realm, including urban greening and tree canopies in urban neighborhoods, reduces violent crime, particularly adolescent gun violence. Again, a Philadelphia neighborhood study found that the presence of street lighting, painted sidewalks, public transportation, and parks was associated with at least a 76% decreased odds of a homicide. So, I'm with you, and I hear you, and I think we need to continue to rally the troops. But I know that in this budget, we do have some INBs that are, that is our attempt to get towards some of these solutions. And I wanted to ask Mr. Clegg if he would highlight some of those things, including some $100,000 that we've committed from PSVS over the last several years for Ward 1 and Ward 2 to enhance, or at least to get to the additional improvements related to the roads and sidewalks and ADA compliance, the $1 million that we're investing in street lighting and focusing on our urban neighborhoods, the $3 million we've allocated last year for community revitalization and the concept of the prosperity neighborhoods, the half a million dollars that we're investing in Jefferson Park and other parks for a new public restroom, but also some of the work that we're doing regarding playgrounds, and of course, the $1 million that is in this budget for the MLK Park reimagining. And those are just a few of those things that I could think of off the top of my head. But if you can please, for the benefit of the public, outline some of the items that we have included in this budget, again, in an effort for us to get to some of these longstanding issues.
Thank you, Councilmember, and Mayor and Council to provide some highlights. I was noting some of the comments as well. Of course, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we've funded at $5 million a year for the last several years. We're continuing with the pattern to provide affordable housing dollars, both through our regular budget as well as ARPA. This is a little less about forward-thinking, but just wanted to note that between ARPA funding and city funding and state match that we applied for by creating an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we have a $13 million Notice of Funding Availability that's going out to create more affordable housing projects. I would also note that we are spending $8 million on neighborhood parks, well, neighborhood and regional parks. We have $1 million towards Mesa Marin, but the other $7 million from PSVS is towards neighborhood parks, as well as some CDBG funding towards neighborhood parks. I would note that we continued the street and alley paving funds for our disadvantaged neighborhoods, but actually have proposed a slight increase to get at some of the completion of streets and alleys and sidewalks and neighborhoods that don't have them today as a proposal in this upcoming budget. I would just reiterate again, the street lighting, we've done $1 million a year for two years. We're proposing that continue next year for a third million dollars of street lighting to be done. Inasmuch as we see opportunities with housing assistance, that's largely funded by other allocations that are from federal dollars, as well as like home or CDBG or emergency services grants, but also we have ARPA dollars that we've committed towards assistance there. And in particular, I would note the federal monies that are even outside of ARPA, the treasury dollars towards rental assistance. There are still more than, you know, $10 million of rental assistance dollars available to individuals who need rent or utility assistance. And then, lastly, we have been funding through some of those entitlement funds, landlord/tenant advocacy through the Greater Bakersfield Legal Assistance, and then, also, as noted around public safety, we do see public safety... treasury dollars towards rental assistance, there are still more than, you know, $10 million of rental assistance dollars available to individuals who need rent or utility assistance. And then lastly, we have been funding through some of those entitlement funds, landlord/tenant advocacy through the Greater Bakersfield Legal Assistance, and then also, as noted around public safety, we do see public safety to be a broad topic. And we've been investing in mental health partnerships between the Bakersfield Police Department and Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. And we're proposing expanding a very successful pilot with having someone in our dispatch center. We're proposing expanding that from one person to four people because we've seen a 60% reduction in calls that have to go out to patrol by that individual being able to field those calls initially first. And so we want to deploy that further. I think there are some programs that are being proposed under Public Safety Vital Services or ARPA that we're seeing as pilots. And then if we see those successful pilots, we could follow the results and the outcomes. And one proposal in this coming year is $500,000 to pursue some violence prevention best practices. And that's proposed as a sort of a, an initial allotment that we would come back to council with some pilot concepts to, but based on our best analysis and best practices that have worked in other communities to try here as well in Bakersfield. So those are some highlights that speak to the many interests that were expressed. They're, I think, well-represented by and large in the proposed budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to speak to the issue of parks. We had quite a few of our speakers talked about park improvements, a lot of park repairs I was hearing about, and then community centers within parks. So first, as a councilmember, I was under the impression that we had sort of, quote, "audited" all of our existing parks and made a list of all repairs, bathrooms, everything that need be done, and that we were, at least in the process, checking off that list so we wouldn't have someone come and say, "The bathroom needs to be..." So as a councilmember, and I think everybody agrees, we are hoping and expecting that all of those repairs to existing parks are on the list to get done, and hopefully this year. So that, I mean, I don't know if the people who came don't know that, or if we don't know it, but it's disconcerting when you say, "We thought we, we said whatever it takes" last year, budget, "Clean up all our parks, fix everything." So that's a council commitment, and I think staff and everyone, we're going to get that done. There was another talk about the need for more parks on the east side because, you know, we adopted an ordinance, I don't know how many, 40 years ago, whatever, on the west side where the actual homeowners pay a lot of money for that park. They also have to pay to maintain that park, and there are taxes that didn't happen on the other side. That's why they have more parks, people paid for them. But in going back and adding more parks to the east side, which we may very well need, I would urge us to, first, to look at that, but remember that you don't have to build a 10-acre park. And infill may be difficult to find 10 acres. 1-acre parks can be beautiful and can serve as community gathering places, people could go... 1 acre is bigger than you realize when you improve it. You can have pavilion, shade structure, places to meet, gardens. 1 acre is big. 2 acre is really big. So when, we should be looking at those opportunities, but let's remember, let's not say, "Well, we've got to have a standard 10-acre park," because you may never find a 10-acre parcel over there that you're going to have to condemn houses, buy them, it'll cost, you know, $10 million. You also reduce the cost when you don't have to do 10 acres. If you're doing one or two, your cost might be a fifth, and you have a really nice park. So let's look for, let's look, again, you know, last week I talked about use your creative imagination, let's, let's think out of the box a little bit on these side and look for opportunities. Obviously, we have to talk with the neighbors there, and I don't know where, it's not my word, I don't know where we need them, but I know these things can be done. And I'm really hoping for great things from MLK Park because it does need to be a community center with, you know, it is already, but with offices, you know, programs for kids, for seniors, for everybody to gather there. We have something like that at Silver Creek. And all of these, I will tell you, because I've been all over the country and I've built some, they need a giant pavilion, period. You have to build a giant pavilion, shade structure with open to conduct, especially in our weather, but really anywhere, the kind of community activities that you will want. It's not generally an enclosed building, there's a few offices, but generally it's open-air, but the expense is in these huge, you know, pavilions. Silver Creek really happened almost by a donation because they cost millions and millions of dollars to do that. I think we can probably pull that off at MLK Park. Maybe there's another place we need to plan that needs to be a big community park with programs. Again, I think we have, we've got Silver Creek, MLK, the north of the river may have something. I know there's a new big 10-acre, but with a lot of planning north of the river to be more of a community center in the Bult House properties out on Stockdale Highway, because, you know, Bult House is going, I guess, build that park. It's charged to the homeowners, but it's a public park. But working with the North of the River Group about programs and all these things, so I don't know, we need to assess, do we need another one of these larger parks on the east side? And I would turn that over to my fellow councilman to help us identify, because, you know, if you plan it, eventually you can make it happen. So I do believe the community programs are very helpful, and they ought to be places, you can't do one in every subdivision because, you know, the, the larger the facilities are expensive and you have employees out there, too. But I think, I think that's important, and I do think it really helps bring the community together as a gathering place. So I would encourage us to plan more of those, but also start looking for pocket parks that we might, might happen a lot faster around our east side and more affordably. So thank you, that's my comments.
If I may, Councilmember Freeman, just to answer, I think, some questions that were there. So Mayor and Council, on the park deferred maintenance list, we did make a deferred maintenance list two years ago, and through the budgets of this year, we have caught up on the deferred maintenance list. Now, I would say, we're investing $8 million in parks next year, you could say, "How are you investing so much if we got all the way through the deferred maintenance list?" How we define the deferred maintenance list were, you know, existing infrastructure that was in bad shape that we needed to replace or to fix. And we've, we have worked all the way through that list. There's a few lingering projects that are scheduled for this year that we're wrapping up. But the $8 million represents our opportunity to continue because there are some items that just, their useful life is now, you know, in this next year, coming to the end of its useful life, so a few replacements there. But we're also fortunate to now start to make some upgrades. We're fortunate to be able to make some improvements to our parks. We caught up on all the deferred maintenance, but folks are looking for better, not just like-for-like. And so we're fortunate in this coming year's proposal to be able to put in some good new amenities into our parks and make some significant progress there. I would also just note that repairs occur on an ongoing basis, at least on the smaller scale, not, not that you'd need an entire new restroom or entire new play structure, but we have proposed actually a half million dollars in this coming year's budget because we have experienced, you know, a significant enough degree of vandalism or just aging of infrastructure, and that, and these are small projects that allows the Parks Department to go in and, and freshen up a coat of paint or to, or to change out the garbage can, you know, receptacles that are in bad shape. And so we've got monies in the budget to get at some of those small issues, but have a big impact on the public, and be able to much more readily address that throughout all the parks in the city, you know, all 60, soon too, but all 61 parks. And so we have made significant progress in the parks, and we're really at the stage now where we're, we're helping to make things look better. As far as where, you know, additional parks should go, should we have community centers? The Parks Master Planning Process is asking all those questions. We're having lots of community engagement in every corner of the city to talk about what do people want to see and what are some of those opportunities? And I think we'll come out of that with a much better sense of, you know, is the community interested in those community centers? Where do we need some of those park spaces? And what are the amenities they want in those park spaces? So that, the implementation of the Parks Master Plan feedback and recommendations will be another significant body of work, you know, in coming years that we really focus our, our budgeting and funding resources towards. I would just reflect, in that conversation, we are looking at, you know, if folks are interested in, let's say, aquatics or community centers, we're also looking at what are those ongoing costs, because that's a little different than some of the park infrastructure costs. But that'll be part of the Parks Master Planning feedback that we're going to get. Last thing I would just note is that, particularly in the east and the southeast, some of the opportunities and challenges are the same, and that, that we have many of these county pockets, as some noted today, much of the Casaloma area is not city jurisdiction, and we're happy to try and work with our county partners on that. But as the city pursues an annexation strategy to bring areas into the city that are now surrounded or adjacent, that we can help then bring them up to city standard. We think there's an opportunity to create a consistent community fabric that has a different standard, as well as more efficiency and just service delivery to the many people that are really part of already the metropolitan area and bringing them into the city and deploying, you know, city services and resources consistently across that, that metropolitan urban fabric. As we bring in some of those annexations, it's an opportunity to look at those, some of those adjacent areas that are not totally developed or, or undeveloped, and find good park spaces for those neighborhoods there. I think, you know, same as Casaloma near MLK Elementary, there are notable unincorporated areas that as we bring into the city could also make sure that we develop to our new park standard.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Freeman, anything further? Thank you. Councilmember Gray.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's always nice to have public comment, and as you all were sharing and requesting tonight, I was thrilled that going over the budget, looking through what we're doing, most of the concerns that were brought up tonight, we've addressed. Of course, there's always more work to be done, but the, you know, the taxpayer can only bear so much of the burden before it becomes too great a burden. And so I wanted to give a shout-out tonight when listening about community engagement with these different community centers and stuff. I totally agree with you, I'm, it's so needed in these neighborhoods. So I wanted to give a shout-out to the private sector in the city, the Boys and Girls Clubs, the Police Activities League. These are all people that are investing, and there's many, many more, but it's just came on the top, off the top of my mind, but these people are investing in our youth, in our community with their volunteer hours. Our police officers are getting off from work, putting on their gym clothes, and heading over to shoot some hoops and so forth. So again, I think as a community, we want to do all that we possibly can, but we do want to appreciate the, the private sector that's getting involved, that is making our, our community even better. And so I definitely wanted to make mention tonight. But I think we're making some good headway. I mean, even in the consent calendar tonight, we voted to purchase that piece of property at MLK so that we can have a community center there. So we're making headway. It's not going to happen overnight, everybody's going to have to be a bit patient with it, but we are making headway. But let's remember that the private sector is just as important in our community as, as the city, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor, excuse me, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Gray. I, I agree with you in that while we're looking at the many challenges in many different areas throughout our city, it is going to take more than just the city. It's going to take our nonprofit, you know, partners, it's going to take private development. We're incredibly grateful for BPD, for all that they do at the Police Activities League, Cap K for what they do at the Friendship House. And I don't mean to sound pompous to the advocates, I really appreciate you coming tonight and, and continuing to push us forward. But as I was hearing the comments, you know, in my head, I kind of continued to say, you know, "We need to do more with the parks, we have a plan for that." You know, "When, we need to do more when it comes to making sure that we have safer routes to schools." In my head, I said, "We have a plan for that." But as I continued to listen, I realized that there's actually a missing piece, and I think it's bringing, you know, partners like yourselves and community members to the table so that, yes, as we continue to make these allocations, develop these partnerships, develop these programs, the work doesn't stop there with the community. We must continue to engage at each and every step of the way. I just want to give a shout-out to Jessica and a couple of folks from the MLK Community Initiative, and a couple of staff members, including Chris Boyle and others who were here, or, excuse, not here, at Bell Terrace at the county building just last night, where we had a conversation about many of the different projects and programs that we're trying to put in place to address many of the issues that we see in our community as relates to parks, as we're, as it relates to safer routes to schools, and continue to bring economic development into our community. Much of the west side has been built out by private development. And so one of the things that we need to do as a community, specifically on the east side and in southeast Bakersfield, is do what we can as a city to incentivize and bring those partners to the table so that we can continue to have the best quality amenities for everybody in our city. I agree with a lot of what Councilmember Gonzalez mentioned about infrastructure and just the tremendous benefits that it provides, not in terms of just quality of life, but in terms of public safety. This is something that we have to be doing. I appreciate City Manager Clegg kind of detailing what we're doing with the police dispatchers and bringing in some of the clinicians, taking a hard look at how are we best allocating our resources to address not only safety concerns, but also some of our mental health challenges in our community. I think it's a step in the right direction. There's certainly more to do, but at the end of the day, I think we need to make sure that we're continuing these conversations with the advocates, with the community members to make sure that we're meeting the mark and, and doing the best that we can. So I want to offer my own time, whether that be now, between the next meeting, when we finalize the budget, or even after, let's continue to have these conversations, as tough as they can be sometimes, because that's the real work that needs to get done. So I appreciate you guys coming and looking forward to those conversations. But I want to touch on JR's comments. I really appreciate you coming, and I know we had some conversation last night as well. But what I heard from you is that, you know, as we develop different parts, specifically of East Bakersfield and southeast Bakersfield, and revitalize certain corridors, including MLK Boulevard, Union Avenue, Brundage Lane, the truth is, there are community members and residents and families who have lived there for decades, who continue to struggle, and even more so with the increasing cost, with inflation, and, and no changes to the paycheck and income. And so tonight, I would like to make a referral to staff that we actually do some research and take a look into what it's going to take to develop a toolkit for anti-displacement or gentrification prevention, specifically in the neighborhoods that we're trying to target in the qualified census tracts of southeast Bakersfield and east Bakersfield. I think this will at least give us a good understanding of what it is that we can do as a city to make sure that we're not only inviting new economic development, new players to the table, new families to the community, but also protecting and making sure that the families that are there can make ends meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor, for another opportunity to speak. I just wanted to highlight or underscore a point that was made among many of the smart points made from our public speakers, and that is the, the real need to take a harder look at annexation in east Bakersfield and southeast Bakersfield. And these county pockets have got to go. It makes no sense, and you know, in, in Ward 2, if you go through the Niles and Monterey Corridor, just above Niles, councilmembers, there are properties where if you're in the kitchen, you're in the city, if you're in the bedroom, you're in the county. It makes no sense. I mean, the way they have drawn these lines, and we need to annex and make sure that our neighborhoods, which are organic in nature, they're, you know, they, they, there's sort of a ecology to these neighborhoods, that they're made whole and they're not split apart. It makes no sense that one side of the street or a block down the road is in the county while the other part is in the city. I think our, all of our community is better served when we, when we annex these areas. And so I, I wasn't sure if I heard the point from you, Christian. Mr. Clegg, if you can just underscore that we're, we've identified this issue in this budget in the sense that we've actually allocated some dollars so that we can put that aside for future annexations so that we can actually bring those neighborhoods up to standard.
You, Councilmember, Mayor and Council, yes, we have a, what I would consider is... You, Councilmember—mayor and council, yes, we have a—I would consider still a modest allocation to help both ensure that we can go through the annexation process, but then have some funds available to help with, you know, infrastructure needs of areas that are, you know, coming—that are becoming annexed. But I would just take the opportunity to also reflect for council that staff is putting together a three-to-five-year annexation strategy to share back with the council. Our initial step of the strategy was to go forward with very small island annexations. When I say small, it's, I believe, less than 150 acres. Thank you, Mr. Boyle. So less than 150 acres, there's actually an expedited process that you can pursue for annexation, and we've been working through eight different small island annexations. But those larger areas that have been referenced still, I think, consider—deserve consideration for community outreach, talk about the benefits of creating that consistent community fabric, being part of the city, and then pursuing, you know, through successive annexations over coming years, really completing that community fabric. So we—we have a strategy in place and some dollars in this budget to help begin that process.
Thank you, sir.
Anything further? Thank you very much. Councilmember Freeman.
Just a comment about the annexation process. I participated in a very frustrating one a couple of years ago, meeting after meeting over in Old Stockdale. And despite the city's best efforts, what I thought were good presentations, irrationality prevailed. It was totally irrational. They finally just gave up after two years of work of community members. So I suggest that you may want to identify all the ones you want, and maybe there's a—first, you need some help in the presentation, you know, what are the hot buttons to really persuade people? Maybe there is a way to do a quick survey to find which ones might be more ripe for it than others, rather than—I think the Old Stockdale, well, they heck with them for the next 10 years, you know? Let's concentrate on these other areas because it didn't—they didn't care that they'd pay less taxes and their water problems would have been solved. And every imaginable good thing in police patrols, they're just, you know, have some powerful people in there who just hate government, I guess. But so rather than spinning your wheels like we do, maybe you can identify—because I know we have so many of them—some sampling, survey, interview, focus group, something that will help you go after the ones that might be more amenable to it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. And there's no action needed on this item. Thank you, everyone who's given input on this. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
There's number 12.
I apologize, Mayor. 12, New Business: Resolution of Local Support for Active Transportation Program (ATP) Projects for Federal Fiscal Years 2023 and 2024.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Would just reflect that this is a fairly routine item to apply for the Active Transportation Program, but bringing it forward as a resolution of support is a somewhat new process as we've closely looked at our grant application process with the assistance of our new legislative advocacy group, who also has grant writers. We looked closely and found that we could be a little more competitive, get a few more points by making sure that we have an opportunity to take a look at the projects as well as have a resolution of support from mayor and council. I would just reflect, again, this is a funding source that is dedicated towards pedestrian and bicycle largely programs, and we've put together what we feel is a very strong application. I'll turn some time to our Polk Works Director, Greg Strakelus, to just provide a few other comments on what that list looks like. But essentially, good news in that we're making a very strong application to leverage our significantly leverage our local dollars with notable state funds towards projects that are in our plans.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. For this resolution, there are eight specific projects that we're requesting—we're filing a grant application for. Those projects come from master planning efforts and community discussions through those master planning efforts, such as our bicycle master plan, also safe routes to school planning efforts. They do focus in on safety for folks in and around school zones, also multimodal facilities, bicycles, pedestrians, and pathways. There are $34.1 million that we're asking for. None of it has to be matched by the city at this point. So if we're successful, it's 100% fulfillment of a grant. Now, again, there are eight, and we're competing with other agencies, too. On those eight projects—
Mr. Strakelus, would you pull your mic closer, please? Thank you.
Absolutely. On those eight projects, they are listed in the resolution and in the admin memo, but staff is prepared to answer any questions regarding any specific project.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just think this item goes back to what we've been discussing, the quality of life improvements, safe routes to school, more pedestrian bicycle facilities, work towards a better quality of life, a great return on investment, obviously, if we don't have to match, and, you know, reduction in crime. And so we are addressing those issues in different ways. And there is a lot of money this year, and, you know, doubtful that we would get the whole 34 million, but a good opportunity to get 20-plus million dollars, I'm sure. So with that, I'll make the motion to approve this item.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Parlier absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 13, Council and Mayor's Statements.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. To the end of what we've been discussing tonight, which is attempting to promote economic development, job opportunity and growth in Southeast Bakersfield and some of our corridors that are long overdue for investment and revitalization, specifically along the MLK Boulevard, I actually want to make two referrals tonight. One, I would like for us to leverage some of the American Rescue Plan Act funding for investments in sewer infrastructure from Brook Street south to the edge of the city limits, which is just south of White Lane. And secondly, to that, also want to look at establishing a sewer maintenance district in that area. So as we front this money utilizing and leveraging some of the ARPA funding that we go back in, as we continue to build out that corridor and investments are made from private development, that we continue to replenish that fund as that development goes in. And then, secondly, I want to thank Chris Boyle for meeting with me a couple of times on this issue. One of the challenges that we see in Southeast Bakersfield is that we have a lot of manufacturing, heavy manufacturing to light industrial in communities that I would consider opportunities for more residential growth, more commercial growth, just like we see on the west side. And to that effect, I want to ask staff to take a look at the use schedules for manufacturing zones and see if there's some opportunities for us to create even more advantages and opportunities to encourage residential and commercial growth in those corridors. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, we have a few community meetings, I understand, related to TCC, the Transformative Climate Communities Grant, coming up in the next week or so. Mr. Clegg, if you can just publicly announce that.
Thank you, Councilmember—
Sorry to put you on the spot.
I don't actually have the specific time and location, but next week, June 7th, we do have a Transformative Climate Communities meeting, and we'll make sure we get that information out broadly.
And if you can provide the council in your weekly update, just a high-level overview on the strategy that we're implementing to engage the community, you know, the specific community stakeholders that are working with us, contracted with us to engage various different neighborhoods, and how we've selected those particular locations where we're hosting those meetings. I want to ensure that all corners of our focus area are represented and are invited to come to the table, and that we're actually meeting them where they are. And so be happy to lend a hand in those efforts as well, and—but really like to understand better where we're headed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I don't see other requests to speak. Thank you to all of you who took time to honor our fallen during this Memorial Day weekend and the privilege of attending for services, and there were so many who volunteered of their time to be there, but also to coordinate and support the services. So thank you to all of you and to the families of all of those who serve and who have lost people. We honor you, too. Sadly, we had another tragedy since our last council meeting. I did send a letter on our behalf to the mayor of Uvalde, Texas, and I would ask us at this point to have another moment of silence in the memory of those who were lost and Thank you. And with that, we are closed at 6:57. We're adjourned.